Hi, everybody. Welcome to today's study session. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here on Zoom.
And Mayor Williamson.
And I am also here. Um, one second.
I can quickly go through all the how tos.
That'd be perfect. Yes. Thank you, Clementine.
So for those of us here in person, uh, wearing a mask is recommended and encouraged, and please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference. There are two ways to join us virtually in today's meeting. You may join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. And commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and we'll call on each speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for the meeting and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving public comment.
Thank you, Clementine. And then we do have, um, council member Smith, uh, teleconferencing in, and so, um, pursuant to the California Brown Act rules for just cause, uh, attendance. I would now like to request that council member Smith respond to the following questions. Councilmember Smith, can you hear me well?
I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
I was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Can you please give us a brief general description of the circumstances relating to your need to appear remotely?
I'm in Livermore for an obligation this evening after our meeting tonight and tomorrow and Friday. Uh, doing some projects for the city of Livermore at the police department, Livermore PD.
Is anyone over the age of 18 there, um, in the room with you?
They are not.
Can everyone clearly hear council member Smith?
Yes.
The Brown Act requires that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting be taken by roll call. And with that, we'll go to pledge of allegiance and, uh, council member Hava will take, kick us off.
Mission.
Thank you for that. And with that, we'll go ahead and start today's study session, which is the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget primer, and I will pass it off to Hans for staff introductions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, always, uh, at this time of the year of, uh, our annual calendar shows that we are providing the council with the first readout of the anticipated budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And, uh, we call it budget primer. Uh, it would bill, we will share with you some, uh, data points, some estimates that, that we are, uh, looking at at the present time. This can all change, of course, but, uh, and you will see in one or two cases, uh, the finance director will tell you that we just got uh, another request for, for, for some payments, uh, that are not trivial, so that will involve, uh, uh, a change in, in the slides there and also in our budgeting. So this is a work in progress. And, um, what we, what we want to do today is we want to brief you and as well as the community about where we are, where we are going. And then, of course, uh, we would also appreciate feedback from the council back and the public. Um, what they think we are missing or what they think we should, uh, add to the budget. Uh, as always, um, it's always appreciated by staff. If you want increases in, in expenditures or programming, tell us where you want to cut it. Um, but, but that is, is, uh, seldom the case. We always get, uh, additional wishes, but, but hardly anything that we want to reduce. But again, uh, this is the time also to share with us where you feel we, um, we need to improve or where you feel we, we should reinstate or reinvent programs. Um, the, 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 the hardest work for us is, is that, uh, we are, uh, trying to read the tea leaves. Um, the mayor spoke about it at a recent meeting where he was, I think, talking about maybe hopefully returning to a biannual budget, uh, which is a budget set up for two years. Uh, the first time we did this, uh, during my career was actually in 2015, I believe, when we set up, uh, the first two-year budget. Uh, until then, we only had annual budgets and then, of course, COVID, uh, threw a wrench into the whole operating system because we, we have really issues in projecting where are we moving with, with our expenses. So this is just an annual, quote unquote, just an annual budget. But, um, it is, uh, uh, as we think, a good estimate of what we think our revenues and our expenses will be. Again, it's, uh, a budget is nothing else than a very educated guess, uh, of how the future will develop. And then we know, um, from March 2020, how fast and on a dime, the whole world economy turned and our, our, all our estimates were thrown out of, uh, the, the window immediately. Um, we, we will maintain our current service levels with our proposed budget. And we will also be able to restore our service levels where, where necessary, where we think we have to do that. Um, we, we spoke about our budgetary challenges a couple of times. Uh, we will do this to, to, today as well. And, uh, a new key element of this budget is that we are actually, uh, uh, able to address more of the deferred maintenance of our aging facilities than we have done in previous years. So, um, again, what, what you will hear from our finance director is this an overview. Uh, I called it the forty-five thousand feet level. Uh, we will not go into the nitty-gritty's and then talk about how much we allocate for office supplies and the city clerk's office. But we will talk more on, on the large-scale department head level, department level of what we are doing. Last but not least, uh, the, the budget is reflective of what the priorities are of this council and the previous council. So you will see clearly already that we have put some marks in there that, uh, show some of the commitments that we believe this council, um, has done. But you see also that our existing work programs, uh, based on our, uh, vision, mission, and value drivers, uh, is still being continued and addressed as well. So with that, I, I hand it over to our finance director, uh, Raffella King.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, it's great to see everyone again. So we're gonna just go ahead and start with, um, starting with the big picture. So as you know, like just a year ago, we've been.
There we go. If you touch it, it moves and it turns off.
Sorry. So starting over. Okay. So our big picture is, um, you know, just a year ago, when we came to the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three cycle, we painted a picture was kind of bleak because our revenues, we weren't sure if we were going to hit those marks. Uh, we didn't know if COVID was coming back and what we were looking at, and then our expenses were, were completely rising. Um, they're, they're rising in double-digit, um, inflation numbers and they were, um, outpacing the revenues and alarming rate. And then our general fund, our structure was, the structural deficit was kind of increasing. So our biggest challenge is last year, or how are we going to continue to give service, um, to our community and that was actually sustainable? And then recruiting and retaining employees and then how we're actually going to balance that budget. This year's budget process presented a few different challenges. So this year's, our revenues have, they've consistently come in strong and in most cases they've exceeded the budget, um, projections. But also our projected operations expenses were severely underspent, so they gave us extra additional money, but that is a issue that we're looking at. Um, we're looking at our capital improvement projects, the aging infrastructure, um, deferred maintenance, and then also setting aside those one-time savings to specifically address these concerns. And so as part of this, we looked at the budget versus process. You know, did we under-budget? Did we over-budget? Or is our process, you know, do, how do we amend that process so that we don't have the underspending and those things? So these are the things that we were looking at big-picture-wise for this year's budget. Our process started in February of 2023. Uh, we started with a kickoff meeting with all the city department heads and all their budget teams. The departments provided their estimated revenues from their departmental programs. And the departments were given, um, their adjusted FY twenty-two, twenty-three budgets and a five-year history and asked to submit their anticipated needs. So our citywide revenues were then compiled, uh, through estimates from departments, from trend analysis, from our consultants, our finance revenue staff, and from the CMO. Um, finance, we then determined, um, the cost for our retirement contributions to OPEB, um, and to UAL to be, um, allocated to each department. Our internal service costs for IT services, risk management, workers' compensation, the vehicle maintenance, operations, uh, vehicle replacements, those are all determined to and included in the final department numbers. These are the fees that actually get allocated back to each department. From that point, our budget team was consisted of, um, several members of the finance department, our HR director and assistant director, and our, um, city manager's office, city manager and assistant city manager. So we met with each department separately to review their initial submitted requests. And these meetings, all the departments had the opportunity to explain, to justify, to defend their requests. And then after more than about fifteen hours of meetings with each department, well, all the departments, the budget team, we met several more times to review and we considered the request to make final, um, initial determinations regarding the direction of the budget in conjunction with the city's priorities. After those initial determinations, the budget team provided updates to each department and they provided, we provided, um, a two-day period for departments to respond to the budget team's decisions, providing an appeal slash feedback to the, um, budget team. Then after this process, the budget team is review, reviewed and considered all, um, further adjustments for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then, uh, but here's the thing that Congress was talking about early after the publication of the note of, um, the budget cycle, we also received notice just a few days ago, um, of an increase in our CalPERS contribution, approximating about six hundred thousand. So that's not included in some of the numbers, but we, um, making allowances for it. So part of our budget process is actually new this year. So our citywide major, um, information service charges were charged directly to the, um, information service division fund. And against technology, the technology reserve fund that we created. Now this minimized the amounts that are being charged directly back to the departments, giving them the effect of, um, decreasing their overall department budgets. So we also requested for newly, newly created positions are being handled outside of the budget process in order to ensure that all the HR-related functions, um, cost analysis, job specs, all those things are completed prior to the position being adopted. However, we also, um, provided funding for in this budget for those positions, um, to include some numbers so that we can actually have a complete accounting for the uses of those resources. Okay. So revenue projections plus our one-time enhancements. Um, so when we came in mid-year, we said that we're anticipating if everything was spent the way that we budgeted and if everything, all the revenues came in, stars aligned, our unassigned balance would be three point three million at six thirty, twenty twenty-three. So we added that with, um, the projected revenues of ninety-eight million, which would give us a hundred and one million, hundred and one, um, projected. We also projected them, um, we'll have a salary savings at about four percent, which is two point eight. And we took out, um, backed out three point five million for anything that's unforeseen expenses because there's things that come up that we know is going to come up or they're just out the blue. So we took three point five out, so available for appropriation, um, one hundred million. So my next slide is going to be a little bit different, but this is just, you know, so we have this number in our back pocket, so we know exactly what we're looking at if something comes up. But just the revenue projections versus the budget request. So our estimated revenues for next year, ninety-eight million. Our requested expenses at ninety-six million. We are put in this slide also, we already committed to, um, having capital improvement projects, given two million for that, which leaves a surplus of two hundred and forty-nine thousand for this year. Um, this does not include transfers in or out, we're anticipating those amount numbers to kind of, um, go back to that hundred and, hundred and, hundred million that we talked about to the, um, that to allow for the transfers in and out. And that extra six hundred thousand to kind of so that we won't go in the negative. So let's talk about our top five revenue generators for FY twenty-four. So the top five, um, accounts, they actually amount to eighty-four percent of the general fund revenue. That is our, um, TOT, our hotel taxes, about thirty-one percent. And that amount is net of the NCIP allocation of sixteen percent, which I'll talk about in the next slide. Our fees and charges are about eighteen percent. Sales and use tax come in at sixteen percent. Property tax at fifteen percent, utility users tax at five percent. So like I said, these top five accounts, they drive eighty-four percent of the general fund revenues. So our, um, TOT, our trans, transient occupancy tax allocations. So we have projected revenues coming in at thirty-six million. Of that thirty-six million, we direct, um, sixteen percent to NCIP, which is five, five million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. And then that leaves the general fund eighty-four percent of thirty million and two hundred and forty thousand. So of these, um, TOT projections, um, revenue, we also spend six percent contribution of six percent that goes to MCCPB, uh, which is, and is capped at one point eight million. So whichever is, is lower than one point eight million or six percent. This case is one point eight million. So available for appropriation from TOT is twenty-eight point four million. So just to give you an idea of our general fund salaries and benefits by departments to see how our, um, this is just general fund only. So our public safety, that is police and fire combined, amount to about fifty-two percent of the general fund budget. Community development is seven percent, parks and recs is fifteen percent, libraries three percent, conference center five percent, and then the administrative departments all combined, that's the, um, city manager, city attorney, HR and finance with about eighty percent. Um, each department for proposed twenty-four position, each department, um, that requested positions were evaluated. Um, some additions are being added to these positions, um, police department, parks and recs, public works, human resources, community conference center, um, community development, libraries and museums, and a city manager's office. So we'll talk a little bit about special revenue funds. We're only pulling now just a few. These are the ones that get the most attention, so I just want to talk about them briefly. So our neighborhood improvement, we have revenues at five point eight, uh, million. I know I said five point seven earlier. Um, this also includes some of the interest that we're expecting for that. Expenditures, we're looking at three hundred and eighty-three thousand. I just want to point out, first of all, for all those smaller ones and expenditures, um, they mostly deal with capital improvement projects, so, and those appropriations will be brought back to council once those projects are identified. Um, so measure PNS, we have eleven million, eleven point nine million in anticipated revenues. Thailand's four million in anticipated revenues for the Presidio, twenty-one million, gas tax, eight hundred and four thousand, and the preceding expenditures, um, that are shown. Again, um, the ones that are, have to do with capital projects, those expenditures will of course increase throughout the year, but those will become, when a project's identified, they'll come back. Speaking briefly about the enterprise fund, so we'll have the sewer line maintenance fund with anticipated revenues of two point five million and expenses of three million. Cemetery fund, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, expenses of five hundred and twenty-one. Marina fund, three point five million, expenses two point eight. Parking fund, eleven point five million revenues and ten million in expenses. Our internal service funds, we have equipment replacement revenues, two point three million with expenses of one point nine. Our vehicle maintenance fund, two point eight million in revenues, two point eight in expenses. Information services, uh, four point seven in revenues, six point one in expenses. Workers' compensation fund, four million, uh, revenues, four point five in expenses. Liability and property insurance, four point six in revenues, four point five in expenses, and employee benefits that's matching eleven point one million. So just want to talk a little bit about the increasing costs that are coming up. So we'll start with payroll. For this, we wanted to show you a picture of, uh, the, um, budgeted versus actuals. So we start with the blue lines are all the budgeted numbers and then the orange lines are where, um, basically the vacancies have a direct effect on the budget. So, um, this year for next year, we estimate about fifty-six million in salaries. That, this doesn't include any allowance, any benefits, but in the prior years, as you can see, there's a slowdown, it shows a reduction in the staff due to the pandemic, if you can see. Um, in the nineteen twenty, there's a huge drop. And then you can see, if you look at from twenty-one through twenty-four, you can see that there's a steady incline for the revenue, I mean, I'm sorry, for the salaries. Um, which also includes a steady growth in the positions along with the four percent colas that was negotiated for most of the bargaining groups. But it also shows the, um, the orange lines also show the effects of the vacancies against the budgets. We're looking at CalPERS. This number here does not include the six hundred thousand that we talked about early. If you can see that from twenty twenty-one, there's been a steady increase every year. Um, and this coming year, and the employer portion as well as the employee, um, pepper portions contributions are expected to rise coming in twenty-three, twenty-four. And the size of the workforce, the longevity of staff requirements of the state and federal level impact, uh, they all, um, affect the cost of CalPERS that we are charged. So we're looking at six point one million this, uh, next year. And then going into our unfunded actuarial accrue liability. Um, that balance for as of June thirty, twenty twenty-one was an X, that actually thinks you say twenty twenty was in excess of a hundred and thirty million. Um, the annual payments have been increasing, uh, you can see the rates of more than a million dollars each year for the past five fiscal years. And twenty twenty-three preliminary amounts, as reported by Pers, projects a slight decrease in the payments. Um, however, it is important to note that the effect of the returns on the market from the last fiscal year expected to have an upcoming negative impact. So when we brought you last year, the, um, from the actuarial reports said a hundred and seventy million is what we owed in UAL. And then we came back a few months later and said, well, now it's one thirty, but we also know that the market crashed between that time. So by the time we get our next, um, report, we're expecting that to go back up to about that one seventy. So our other post-employee benefits, so our OPEB-funded, um, balance is eight million. Um, as you can see that there's a huge dip in twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty, that's the year that we opted out to forego the payment for the OPEB because of the com pandemic and COVID, so we did not make any payments that year. But as you can see, they're kind of leveling out for the last year, so one point three million is what we paid for twenty-two estimating. Millions will be paid for twenty two estimating to this year to finish the one point one. And next year's projection is one point four million. So my general liability insurance premiums are also rising. The insurance is actually rising no matter what market you go in is the insurance market right now. The costs have grown considerably over the last several fiscal years. I should see is a steady incline. A key factor in determining the price is always the annual payroll cost. The insurance market has deteriorated significantly over this stretch of settlements are in awards have increased due to combination of factors, including. The lack of tort caps in California, also specialists, plaintiff attorneys and change in jury profiles, all those things. Which means the settlement cases are they're settling for larger amounts. All of those things have an effect on what the insurance premiums are going to be. And it's not just the insurance company that we work with. It's 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 all over nationwide. Also adding to that, our workers' compensation insurance. As you see, our numbers dropped significantly in twenty twenty one. That's of course when we had the layoffs due to the pandemic and they're steadily rising. These costs, again, they come from our claim history, the size of our city, any staffing level impacts, cost of workers' compensation insurance. So all these things are a factor. But as you can see, the number is steadily going up. And then we have our I S D information services division support. So as we has continued, the cities, we continue to increase the I T infrastructure, the support cost for the city has increased dramatically. I think this year we changed a lot of servers. Next year we have to do. If I start the finance system and we have other things that we are on the on a rise. So the amount is going up. We are anticipating approximately one point million dollar, one point one million in I T support costs for next year. And then the funding we will take from the I S D has their own fund balance and then also some of the money that we put away in the technology reserves to pull those. For those numbers together. So that's.
Just to clarify, these are just the cost we pay software companies for using their software. That's not staffing or anything. That's just you looking into Zoom right now and paying the Zoom bill. You're using Microsoft and using Microsoft. We're using financial software, public work software, et cetera. This is just. Support cost under under our account for contractual services doesn't include a single I T guy in in a single I T server, et cetera. Just what we shell out to software companies. That's why this number, I wanted to show that number because it's all in the cloud. Yes, it's in the cloud, but you pay for it.
So here's a new thing that we've been tracking separately merchant service fees. They are increasing at a rate of nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year. So finance, we're currently considering options, writing a new policy concerning options. How do we reduce the cost for reducing the fees? Some of the things we're looking at are lowering the credit amount that we accept from credit cards. Our passing on the fees to vendors and then acceptance of B F T payments, direct checking account information. So. We are looking at a lot of different things and seeing what we have available and can do that. So that we can basically kind of control this cost a little bit more.
So so that's every time somebody pays a fee per credit card. That's what we get deducted for the luxury of accepting a credit card. That amounts now to over eight hundred thousand dollars. Will increase next year again by another hundred thousand. So we got to tame those costs as well. Because if we just recover cost. For services and don't consider those costs, we have to do a great deal of our transactions and parking is just credit cards. There's nothing we can do about it. But collecting building fees doesn't mean that we have to contribute to to mileage cards or or other cards. So we we should find the reasonable caps. For someone to not accept a twelve thousand dollar credit card. Or a building permit, but kept this maybe at a thousand dollars or something like that. So that's what we are working on to figure out as well.
Well, and my understanding that there could be a fee tied to it as well that we charge.
That is an option to pass on that fee. I believe most credit cards about two point nine, three point nine percent or maybe a blanket four percent for some of the larger things that we pass on. So that's one of the things that's on the table.
Thank you.
Then we come to our citywide fuel costs. So you can see the crisis has been going up, but the good thing is look, next year is going down.
Hey, you got to sprinkle in that positive, you know?
So we've been doing some research and we looked out there. We're thinking that twenty three, twenty four is going to have some release. The prices are expected to remain volatile through our twenty four. So in throughout twenty three and into twenty four. So we are looking at it to come down a little bit. And then here are city utilities costs. Hans wants to take this one.
Rafael, I said, what do you want to say with that slide? Because I gave it to her. But but if you put a trend line on there, you see that the utility costs are increasing. And the the bars or the red or dark darker red color, I'm not good in colors. On the bottom is P G N E. And the the blue line above there is K L M. And then the other one, the green one is natural gas. And you see, of course, the the cost keep increasing and going up and up. So it's it's part of of our. I call all those slides, by the way, that we are showing you right now are forgotten costs because they are the cost of doing business. And and so. Part of that is of course also utility costs. We are lucking out this year with with the rainfalls. Usually our. Sprinklers start operating at the end of March, so we haven't turned them on yet. And the park operations manager promised me to do it. By mid May. So the water costs are appropriately lower, will be lower. But I wanted to show you also that it costs also two and a half million to three million dollars a year to heat. And operate the city with with utilities.
Okay, so it's talking early about those one time savings. So are the areas that we get the. The contributions are we've had salary savings because of the vacancies and underspending in the operations. We've talked about these before and trying to maintain your core. Increases in revenues and then we have also still have some unspent encumbered funds. So these are the items that the five areas that we've identified as what's contributing to those one time savings. So finances committee, we're keeping a watch for eye on these and contributions in our one time savings and how to use those funds wisely. And so this year, how we decided this wisely is we're proposing to use those one time. Fees as these are our savings as reserve allocations using the one time savings. So first of all, we want to maintain the economic recovery fund. Is that eighteen percent now? We just kind of want to maintain that. So I'm going to skip the rest of this slide because I have them in nice cute little charts here. So our economic uncertainty, which was established in about the mid nineteen eighties, our current balance in this fund is seventeen point three million. Because our expenditures are a little less than it was last year, we don't need to add any addition for to keep it at eighteen percent. The conference center facility council established this in March of twenty two last year at the mid year budget. We currently have a balance of one point eight million in this account. We're proposing seven hundred and fifty thousand for twenty FY twenty four. The sports center also established March twenty two. We have one point eight seven five in this fund. Reserve account, seven hundred and fifty thousand is also being proposed here. Our pension. Established in March twenty two, we have four million sitting in this account. We're proposing two million addition. As you know, just a side note, we approved the section one fifteen trust last month. We're in the process of getting that. All the contracts and everything together and we will transfer the initial two million dollars into that account. So. It'll go back by July one, this will be two million to start with, but.
So we we think that 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 transfer will happen by the beginning of the next budget cycle?
Yes, let's hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we'll come back and ask you what you want to do with the rest of it later.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And then we have the technology infrastructure. We established that one also in March twenty two. As you see, we were very busy that first mid year and we had two point, now we put in two point five million. We are requesting an addition of five hundred thousand for FY twenty two, twenty four. And then city facilities, we just did this one this past March twenty twenty three during mid year. With the current balance now of three hundred thousand, just to kickstart the city facilities reserve fund. We are proposing two hundred and fifty thousand for additions for twenty twenty four. In addition, these are funds that we are asking to be established or proposing to be established for July. A central public safety facility. We know we need the building and just start putting funds away. So that's July twenty twenty three. We're proposing two hundred and fifty thousand. To start that one, the library facility as well, July twenty twenty three is starting. Proposing to put in two hundred and fifty thousand there. And then last meeting, we talked about the rental council talking about a rental registry. So we want to want to put away two hundred and fifty thousand to kind of start that as well. And then reserve accounts for special revenue funds. These are not part of the general fund. So the Thailand's sea level rise. We established that one in March twenty twenty two, current balance of two hundred and fifty thousand. We're proposing two hundred and fifty thousand. Addition for twenty twenty four and then the parking garage established, we're trying to establish this one in July as well. And I want to start that one with five hundred thousand.
Can you describe the parking garage one a little bit more, please?
What we want to do is there's a few parking garages that need upkeep. And I don't know if they want to rebuild them, but there's there's significant upgrade.
So we have zero dollars to replace a parking garage today in the bank. So we need to build up. Some sort of reserves also to for one day to put money aside to replace parking garages. When you look at the east and west garage and and their location right now, they they are, I believe, also something like thirty five, forty years old now. They should come up for replacement and it's it's an interest. It might be an interesting project for the city because you have in the center of the city. Two garages that that you can replace, but you can also consider. An interesting mixed use project in there that that allows some sort of business housing plus. Location. So we have two prime locations in the downtown sector. And pending also how how traffic volume is you, that might be worthwhile to explore. So we. Want to put money aside for that. You know that the Cali peep, Cali principal parking garage has been discussed as a. Affordable housing site also. That might that also is is going towards that. And then, of course, our our number one parking garage that is really. Our most profitable or most bringing in the most parking paid parking users is the is the Canary Row parking garage. But astonishingly, the city has not put any money into facility reserves to. Replace those parking garages and we need to put that money aside. We have upgraded our parking software. Over the past three years at a tune of something like two and a half, three million dollars, we invested parking funds into the waterfront parking. Area. You've seen that we we purchased with the parking fund also. The Del Monte property that is now that house the Ambrose or the the Indian Clay Oven Restaurant. We purchased this to get the water, but also we purchased it to have. The whole block then under control should be one day replace something there. So. That's that's the that's the genesis of saying, okay, if the parking fund. Generate generates a modest surplus, let's make sure that we are reinvesting the money also into the upkeep of the parking garages.
And then is the funding for this reserve going to come out of the parking fund?
Yes, hundred percent. So what you see there is not general fund. This these are funding coming from the Thailand's from the parking garages, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
With that answer, just the agenda report actually had the parking garages with the general fund. And when I was putting the slide together, I was like, oops. So it actually goes out of the parking.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and so so our recommendations that you receive the proposal and that you provide any direction on any requested adjustments. And then I'll hand it back over to Hans for closing remarks and then chief back to you for questions and comments.
So. What would we have, what?
It's our services at work for us.
Yes. What we have provided you was a very, very large scale overview. The the again, the underlying idea is to share with you where we are in our revenues, where we are on estimation that we should continue. To look at our reserves, but by all means, also, we would like to hear from you as well as from the community. Where would you like to see us to put an emphasis on or where do you like to see us to? Bring back programs or bring back new programs. These numbers are all preliminary, so there is nothing written in in those numbers right now. That doesn't allow you to tinker with it or to adjust or ask us to figure out how you want to do something. So this is again, a forty five thousand feet overview. You have all the. There are all the tools there for for you to. Come back and make suggestions and we will figure it out how how to. Work those numbers into the into the budget and we'll report this back to you in the first meeting in June. And we at that time, we will present to you actually the budget down to the dollars. And you still have a second meeting in June where we then ultimately fine tune those numbers because usually. What happens in the first meeting in June is that we are fighting over a hundred fifty thousand dollars and a hundred eighty million dollar budget, including all the special funds. And then we'll figure out how we do the hundred fifty thousand and then everyone in the public is happy and then we approve the budget in the second reading.
Perfect. Thank you, Steph. Bring it to the council for any questions. Yeah, we'll start off with Council Garcia, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Rafael, for the presentation. Numbers is not one of my strengths, so thank you for breaking it down the way you did. I I think I understood for the most part what was being shared. Few questions that came up for me. Is is there, starting with this one, is there a mechanism currently? Where public input is also included in the decisions? How the budgeting takes place or happens?
Currently, it would be this meeting, the study sessions and the public meetings.
Okay. There was mention of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus. What what happens to that surplus?
It 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 gets part becomes part of the unassigned fund balance. So basically we take it and we we appropriated the next year. Sometimes it's used to balance the budget next year. If we can't balance the budget or if we have enough left, we'll kind of put some things into the reserve accounts, but it's just available for spending.
Okay, thank you.
Let me explain it differently.
Okay.
The 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 general fund budget right now is hundred million dollars plus minus, right? So ninety eight million around that ballpark. We are projecting that we will land in that ninety eight million dollars with a surplus of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end. So if utility bill bills increase by twenty percent. The two hundred fifty will be gone. So it's it's basically. What we anticipate or what we want to say is our safety zone, our safety buffer. Now, the slide that Rafael showed you showed you also. That we put three point five million dollars aside for unexpected expenses. So there is a, there's a larger safety buffer. I want counsel just to think that we have not all labor contracts in place right now. So we got to account for that as well. But the point that I tried to make is the two fifty is basically what you have after one year of budget, you should have that in the savings account and then. Ninety nine percent of the cases, we have that and more in at the end of a fiscal year in the unassigned balance. But you want to have some lending space if if one of those factors do not come into place. Our salary savings, we. Are more aggressive in the salary savings by four percent because we learned from previous years, again, I I shared this with council. That we have carry between fifty to sixty. Positions fully funded that are not filled with incumbents. So. There is a lot of unassigned balance and Rafael pointed that out as well. So the two fifty is not really a surplus, so to speak. It is a surplus, but it is kind of. Give us a little bit more leverage in in case we need the funding.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. I'm a little hesitant to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyways.
Do it.
Do it. Might take you a little bit out of your comfort zone, but I'm just curious, just because I I want to hear your opinion. Any specific areas of the budget? That the public should be. Concerned about. Maybe there's some red flags that we see that we should keep an eye out for. Or any celebrations as well, any areas of the budget, right, where we should really say, hey, you know, a good job is done and.
So take me outside my comfort zone.
He warned you.
So personally, what I'm thinking is when I look at. Savings. So I'm looking at the O N M savings. It's like a double edged sword for me because I'm looking, oh, yeah, you know, great. We we said we were going to do. I'm throwing out any kind of numbers, ten million dollars. We came in at seven, woo hoo. But at the same time, I'm looking at, are we budgeting correctly or why didn't we spend that three million? Do we or, you know, what did we give up? During the budget process and saying we couldn't afford to do this because we thought we were going to use it here. So for me, red flag is going. Fine tuning those things. And we've already talked about the vacancies. That's red flag. That is. What are we doing? Why can't we get, you know, those positions filled even though we are? H R is working extremely hard. We're all working extremely hard trying to get the positions filled. So what do we need to do? That's red flag in order to to recruit and retain staff. And then at the same time, while you're looking at that is. What are you doing to current staff? You know, our current staff being overworked, so that goes into the retaining. So to me, those are the red flags that I'm looking at. And, you know, we we talk about the aging infrastructure. That's something that we all should be looking at and thinking, okay. You're not think, oh, don't put money there. But it's like, well, if the building is fifty years old. You know, at some point, you have to start saying, how do we refurbish? How do we make sure that, you know, the roof is not leaking the next time we have storms? Or, you know, those things are what that those are the things that come to my mind when I'm looking at it. So we try to make sure that we present all of this to. All the issues along with, you know, the good news and the bad news and not try to over celebrate or, you know, give you all the. But just trying to give you the information that way you're able to discern for yourself.
We we have a fire, we have a.
They didn't want to hear it either. So just just to make sure that just discerning for yourself in the community, looking at, and I would like to encourage them all to look at. The total picture, not just one piece of it, but look at the total picture, look at the entire agenda report, look at the entire presentation and ask the questions. But to me, those are the those are the areas that we try and point out.
Could I do one? There was another part of the question too. I think the celebration portion portion, which might have been a little bit embedded in your response, but I just wonder. If there's any additional thoughts there.
You know, I I like, as a finance director, I like when you come in under budget.
I'm an easy person.
But those are some, those are some areas, but. And and the things that I see is I see that. Everyone is working hard. Everyone has these fantastic ideas of things that will move the city forward or some some things that. In every different area. It's like, I'm quiet most of the time, but I'm but I'm listening always. So I'm listening to the police chief talk about the homeless people and how do we do this? I listened to. Him talking about all the planning and the water and Andrea, all the all the work that we're doing with the. Infrastructures and the bridges and things like I'm listening to all of that and and I'm listening to H R. How do we do? You know, trying to bring everything into best practices. And so I'm watching all those things that I'm watching all the changes slowly happen. So those are my celebratory, just sitting back and watching the things happen and watching everyone kind of work collaboratively. Collaboratively together to make those things happen. So those are my celebratories. So I don't know if it's all finance related, but that's why.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for indulging my question and and I mean, it's a great response, great insight for for myself as well. Being newer to city budgeting. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for all the work you do.
Awesome job. Thank you so much for the presentation and all the hard work. I echo. Councilman Garcia about the hard work that you all have done. Just have a few questions. In the enterprise funds with the sewer line maintenance fund and the cemetery fund, I noticed that was. Some of the expenses were exceeding the revenue a a a little bit more. Is it? Is it the increase in some of the supplies or? What what's happening there? Or is it just that it's kind of like what you were talking about, fine tuning the budget and changing things?
In some areas, it is. It's all of that. And some some funds, it may be that. Just this particular year, like you were talking about the fund balance, well, we'll start with, so we'll start with. Let's start with sewer line maintenance. Like, I don't remember what the beginning fund balance number is, but say we do have some reserves left over. So this particular year, we have expenses that are more than revenues, but it may be that we have two million dollars sitting in the beginning balance. Knowing that we were going to do some additional projects in next year. So we, you know, put that aside and knowing that. Other areas, some funds that they're just not the cost. It just costs more than the revenue. Cemetery is one of those things. That it costs more to run than the revenues that we bring in. So those are things that we kind of look at. Marina Fund is more, Parking Fund is more, but that's just pretty much is. So the enterprise funds are are treated as. They're treated as proprietary funds. The pro, these are actually for profit accounts. And then one of the other things that happened this year with the enterprise funds is that the cost for. Retirement was actually because of a change in accounting principles, the way things happen, the actual costs increased for the expenses for that. So it actually made those expenses. Go down or go expenses go up for those accounts. But those are things that we actually, it's a great question that we actually take a look at. And once we're audited, all these things, I'm always saying, we're, you know, where are we with these funds? Are these funds making money? Because at some point in time. If they get to too many years out where they're not making money, our auditors will come back and say, well, there's a coin concern concern issue. So can we actually continue to run this as a business? And if not, then those things will get absorbed in the general fund. So we pay close attention to the enterprise funds that are upside down to make sure that they don't stay that way.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my next question was dealing with the cowpers that you had already said about the increase of the contributions of six hundred thousand. I I I understand that we're seeing that everywhere as far as with cowpers. So I was just wondering, are there any suggestions for where that money will come from since you're just kind of finding out about the increase or you haven't had time to really think about it?
No, we're good because. Earlier, when I talked about, okay, here is the rep, let me go back to. This account gives me peace about that. So when I'm looking at their salary savings of two point eight and we get to that, you know, a hundred million dollars worth of amounts that we can spend. So here was a just from year to year, this year, we're looking at two hundred and forty nine thousand. But if I'm looking at, okay, here, I've got some additional money that I'm looking at. That's basically in my hip pocket in our savings account. So I'm, I am. I don't have any heartburn over the six hundred thousand this year. Last year, I had a lot of heartburn, but not this year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, thanks for the presentation. With respect to the insurance, I think I think it showed a cost, a projected cost of like two point six million. And I just wondered, when did we, have we gone out to bid? Have we gone to market just to kind of see where our current courier is that? Compared to maybe what somebody else might offer? Or when did we last do that? Have we given any thought to that?
It's been coming up in a conversation. We've been talking, we have Excel for our, because we're self insured up to a million dollars per bid. So we have Excel for X as our excess character carrier. One of the things, because we don't have a whole lot of large. Claims is one of the things that we talk about a lot at the board meetings for Excel and. We're, we have not considered yet going out for bid because we're part of that J P A. And we. The insurance, so. All cities, there are thirteen cities that are involved in our in our layer. And we all have, everyone is getting it that way. And so they give us the information that's like, it's not just. Monterey is not just California is nationwide. They're right now because of all the claims and things that are coming to juries. And the juries are awarding. I wish I could tell you some of the things I've seen, but the juries are actually awarding. Huge numbers. And those things affect the insurance overall. There's a lot of insurance characters, carriers that no longer even want to cover cities at all. So. We're doing a lot better than most.
I see. So we participate in an insurance J P A with other jurisdictions. Okay. It mean, it's still maybe and maybe not this year, maybe in the future, something to kind of maybe put in the idea. That if our car, it's possible are that we might be in a better better position. Maybe I'm biased, but I think we do a pretty good job of risk management. So but. On the tidlands fund, you know, at first I was just wondering where where did the money in the. Sea level rise kind of reserve come from? And I think the city manager answered that it comes from the tidlands fund itself. And I'm just wondering, just a thought, if that's enough to go into the sea level rise fund? And I do know, obviously, we've got pilings that we have to replace. And there are other costs as well, of course. But it's just a thought, you know, if that two hundred and fifty thousand, even if we did that for ten years, that's two and a half million dollars. That isn't going to pay for a lot of sea level rise damage if if, yeah, sorry.
I was trying to let you finish.
Okay, I'm finished.
I will say that I don't think that it is enough, however, and we are bringing back reserve policy. For each particular policy in in June. But what we're doing is back for the Thailand is because it's not general fund and because the general fund is not just supporting it. We are taking it based on the revenue source and what's left over in that particular fund.
I see. So that's sort of like what was surplus revenue versus expenses this year. That makes sense. I I I noted and was happy to hear, it sounds like we're going to fund some new police officer positions. Are those replacement positions? Are those new positions? Are we talking about increasing our sworn officer positions?
I'm glad the police chief is not in the room. We we are not hiring more police officers. And and the reason for that is is simply. That we can allocate funding for additional police officers, but we are just not getting them hired. So we wouldn't lock money aside.
I see.
So when we talked about police officers with the police department, what we are proposing and we are working on that principle right now. To hire a homeless navigator. And bring this homeless navigator into the police department where we have all the other resources sitting from our so social service providers. That working hand in hand with our M dot team. And so that that's a new position in the police department. And I believe there's also a police services technician that would basically allow us to to. Do the background operation, but there are no new police officers, even though the police chief really wanted it. But for us, the for the budget team right now, the council can always override it, of course, but. We we are, we don't have enough street ready officers as is. We are still facing recruitment challenges and it would just block.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, funding extra positions that then go unfilled would just be. Unspent money at the end of the year that could have been spent.
I just realized Councilor Smith is probably listening and will tell me ten reasons why this is wrong, but.
Another question I had, and this is the, you know, the twenty five thousand foot view, so that's probably why, you know. It wasn't addressed, but was it two years ago or three? I can't remember when we acquired the old capital site and. And obviously, we haven't had funds to develop that as a park. Is there any, has there been consideration? Was there consideration in this budget process to look at that or when? And when do we think that might be something that we would start, you know, funding in terms of developing the park as a. You know, public service park. Yeah, that knows the answer.
We we've just released earlier this year, the R F P for developing the master plan. And so there are a few so far very well qualified firms that will go through that process. We hope to conclude. The master plan development process and gather public feedback on what they're looking, what what we want to see. For the old capital site. There are several limitations on that site as as you all are aware of, primarily water. That can even impact the potential development of old capital for uses. That one might even think are are mild, like campgrounds or other other types of uses. But we we plan to complete that this fall and based on on that, we'll have cost estimates for what. What development could take place at the old capital site, including looking at potential state funding.
Okay, so what I hear is that's going to be coming down the road. We're in the early stages. We're going to be getting public input, planning. And then once we have a better idea what we're going to do, then then we could start thinking about funding it in a future year. Okay. The last question I had had to do with. With water, which you mentioned. And it just occurred to me, of course, that, you know, we've talked about diverting some of the. Excess rainwater from El Estero to Monterey One. I don't know if that's something we need to fund an infrastructure for. They're going to fund the infrastructure for. But was there any consideration of that in this budget or, and again, maybe that's something we're not even going to have to do. Maybe we just.
Next Tuesday, you will approve a one million dollar grant that will look into funding. The methodology and and exploring and then funding the methodology of how we are diverting. Lake water into the Monterey One Water Pipe System. We we received a million dollars in state funding for that and that will be part of that project. And we estimate that lake water might be available annually, pending on, of course, the rainfalls. Between seventy acre feet of water to hundred ten acre feet of water. So that that water then will will go. From the lake into Monterey One Pipes. And of course, we we can also maybe consider talking to Monterey One Water. Of getting maybe some of the water as a credit or something back.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot. Those those conclude my questions.
Councilor Smith.
Oh, I thought you guys took took off and.
Never. We would never do that to you, sir.
Oh, great. Rafael, good, good job and thank you for the presentation. I know what leads into this is weeks and weeks of of hard work. So thank you. All good questions I've heard so far from council members. I want to add just a couple of things and and a question, Rafael. On your slides where you're showing. The special funds and you have them labeled and showing us. In some cases, the revenue and expenditures, but I'd like to see a third column. And as you're going through it. Let me go bigger here so I can see. Yeah, that, no, that's the special revenue funds. You had one that was the garages. Tidlands. I'm sorry. You going fast?
I'm getting to it.
Well. Yeah, that one. So so when you're talking about tidlands, sea level rise versus the tidland funds. In the parking garages. Not on this form, but is there a way in in future, like in June? And when we talk about this in midyear, that we can see a column that shows us the fund balance.
Absolutely.
And it's not this slide. It was a previous slide. So specifically, when we have tidlands funds, I don't know what the balance of that is. I don't know what the balance of the parking fund is or the garage fund. So we'd like to see that displayed. So council can get a sense of where we were, what we have in the balance and and what's the tracking going forward. That would be helpful. I've got some notes here on my iPhone, so let me get to those. Where you have the slide and it talks about pension. If you could go to that slide, please. That the last one. Nope, you passed it. That.
Yes.
No, it's a it's a text box.
This one?
No, it's a, it it has the. The pension is listed. No, it's a it 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 has the, the pension is listed there.
Pension Reserve Fund?
Yeah, the Pension Reserve Fund. So, well, we don't, we don't need to have that, so that's fine. Um on the slide where it talks about uh pensions, that that is specifically the Pension Reserve Fund. I think it would be helpful for the public if we started having that labeled, um the one fifteen fund. Because it's going to get confusing as we talk about pension, pension liability. And then we have a per's assessment that we have to pay additional six hundred thousand. I think it's time that we create the the one fifteen where we s- we show it independent of just calling it pension. Instead of just a pension reserve, I think we should just label it one fifteen. So we can start the education process to so that clearly there's a distinction. It's a one fifteen pension reserve fund.
Okay.
Hey, Ed, could I jump in on that for once?
Yes, go ahead.
When we were discussing this before, there was the idea of potentially having the fund available so that we weren't just making payments towards the one fifteen, that we could make direct contributions as well. So I'm not sure if there's a, I I hear what you're saying, and I think there might be a way that we can maybe better to identify the account so that it's clearer, but not maybe direct, not specifically one fifteen.
Well, let me ask Raphaela, is this pension line item of a current balance of four million and a proposed two million, is that the one fifteen fund?
It is, but but so right now, this is everything that's been um for that. But we can take that as separated because as of today, two million of that four has been approved to be put into the section one fifteen. So I can always split this into the amount that we're putting away for pension is is this. And then once council decides that this is the dollar amount that we want to, we'll move it over to the one fifteen until we transfer to that account.
Yeah, and and you can figure out how you want to present it, but I think it's time for us to sort of have a dual track of of what what we're talking about is, actually, we made an affirmative move that is very helpful. So I think we should label the one fifteen somewhere.
Understood.
Okay. And on the the fund balances, when you were talking about uh and it's early on in the presentation where you're you're coming to the sum total of ninety eight million. And there's a category in there where you've got uh the the reason, well, it's not called reserve, but it's the excess of uh three point five million dollars, I believe. If you could go to that slide back in the beginning. It was one of your overview slides. Yeah, um yes, that that's it. Thank you very much. So I know your math here is um for um your accounting, but when I look at this, I see, based on what I heard, the salary savings is two point eight that hangs out there, that we move forward into the next budget year. And this two-part question, is that the four percent salary savings from the remainder of this fiscal year? Or anticipated in the next fiscal year?
That amount is what's anticipated next fiscal year.
Okay, so in that case, we have two point eight, we believe, starting July one that will carry us forward a year in the event that we have something crazy occur. Plus your three point five for unforeseen expenses, sort of the reserve inside of the year budget. So that's putting it at six point three, right? So we're starting off July one with basically three point three. Um but you've got the six hundred thousand dollar bill sitting on your desk that we have to account for. So essentially, what it's saying is that we're starting the July first year budget with north of six hundred or six million dollars, where we believe we have a cushion. Is that the way you're describing it?
Not quite. I think we're going to end up at the same result. Uh my thought is that we start off with three point three. And basically, we're eliminated the three point three with the three point five. That's w- we kind of basically said we're not even using that. So I'm looking at moving forward. We start with three point, the three point three. We're going to add in um two point eight for um the salary savings. So that's pretty much kind of like that extra on top of the re- revenues that we're projecting. So I think we came to the same result, but it's pretty much it.
So if a member of the public said and asked the question on July one, what do you have in surplus for the year of twenty three twenty four? What would the answer be?
My answer would be that three point, as of right now, would be the three point three.
So that's an, that's an unassigned fund balance, balance for this year.
Correct. Coming from everything from this year, it would be three point three.
Okay, but the the question, I'm sorry, but the question is, July one, what's, what do you believe is that that account you would call for unforeseen expenses? The pocket that we say we're starting the year with this much, that is for the unforeseen expenses. That amount is how much?
I am, okay, so starting with three point three, I'm expecting um in addition, the amount that we're putting away for reserves would be added to that, but actually taken away. So I would say we come in in at eight, but taking away five. So I would still say that we are looking at three. Um you know, it's just about three point three, three point five to walk in the door um at July one. Because the salary savings happens along the way, but we're just, we understand that we're not going to hire everyone at July one. So some fun, um some uh positions may take three months, may take six months. So we're anticipating that that's four percent of that. So um I would be comfortable with that two point eight in addition to the three point three.
Okay, but we still have three point five that you're planning on being for unforeseen. Is the three point five part of the three point three carryover?
Pretty much. It kind of washes, it will wash.
Okay, so I think it would be helpful for us to call the funds actually what we formally call them, the fund balance unassigned six thirty twenty three ending this year budget is really carryover. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I, and that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to label this and keep and keep uh talking about the same kinds of terms. Carryover for the end of this year moves us into the next year budget starting July one. We're starting the July one budget with a carryover of three point three. Is that, is that the the right answer?
That's fine. Unassigned is the official accounting name, but we can put on here and call it carryover so that everyone is clear that we're not, you know, using all the legally terms, so they'll understand.
Yeah, and and just it helps for the public to understand, um because there are many watchdogs that that uh that really love this.
Um uh and Councilmember Smith, uh also, we really don't know if at six thirty twenty three, we have three point three million dollars sitting around. We know this probably the, in November, December, when we, when we have account closed, when we have sales tax collected, et cetera. And we definitely know it by by hopefully December thirty first uh or early January. So again, this three point three million is is not really something that is available on July first because uh um that is just what we estimate today and we know it uh probably for sure when we come back to you with the mid-year audited numbers.
Yeah, and no promises, because I understand how invoices are still being paid, probably until August first. Um so you talked about the the public safety budget and the positions for the police department. So I'll I'll just say, um I understand it and I can agree with it because as it moves forward and the chief comes to you and says, we have X number of new candidates, can we, can we hire? We still have an over over hire policy for public safety?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and what's the amount that we could over hire for?
I think it's, is it two positions or something like that, two or four positions? That's the best I can say right now. We have a fire right now that is out, and that's why our police chief left the building. Uh we had a fire on English Avenue and um it's it's extinguished. Uh several apartments had to be evacuated and affected by the water. Only one apartment burned. So I'm sorry, I cannot answer that right now, but I know we have um uh hi- over hiring authority.
Okay, good. And I'm satisfied with that. And best of luck to everybody who's working that crisis and those that are displaced. Hope for the best that they um that they get, they get back in safe and everything is going to work out for them. Um I want to move to the master plan. Uh you mi- you mentioned, I'm anxious for that. Uh very much motivated to get us to the point where um we can have some decision points about the capital site. And um really looking forward to twenty uh twenty three twenty four where we can talk about Fort Ord again. I think Alan mentioned that as well. But looking at what our possibilities are there, and I know it's a little sidetrack off the budget, but uh any decision what we need to make with property that is owned by us, we'll certainly have to look at our general fund to fund the study or or fund the the actionable items for those properties. So the capital site in Fort Ord are high on my list. Um so the the one fund balance that sort of hangs out there that um, you know, um Councilmember Gino got to ask a question where we put Raphael on the spot, so maybe I'll put the city manager on the spot. Um you allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a placeholder for rental registry. Um so why wouldn't we take that two fifty and put it in the garage fund? Or uh parking fund or or somewhere else where we have underfunded? Um because, as you said, the rental registry process is going to take us quite a while, possibly ten, twelve months before it even comes back to the city council. So I'd like to hear something about why we would, why we would launch into a future, future program uh that we probably could use that money in one of those other accounts to set aside.
So m- m- maybe could I ask that, maybe the council discuss that after the public comment? And we can come back to that. I don't want to take you off of that, but I think it might be a policy decision that maybe we just make as a council as opposed to directing staff from one council member, because I I I imagine that there might be some disagreement on that.
Well, I I think I'd like to hear from my city manager about it, and then I'll take the answer. And uh and it could be that it's a future policy discussion to have in June, but I just need to have some understanding of what his reasoning was. And I may agree with his reasoning after hearing.
So uh yes, we we have startup cost. Uh uh that means uh for us, when we start working on the rental registry, which will be uh hopefully uh starting in July twenty twenty three with a new fiscal year. We need to, as I indicated, uh bring on board um uh at least one or two staff members. And we will have additional cost in 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 acquiring the software, et cetera. So um th- these are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a total of four hundred thousand that that we think it might cost in total to establish it. Those monies we will recover again when we are starting uh and council blessing our concept in how we are um managing the rental registry and recovering the costs on an annual basis per rental unit. So this is basically uh not a res- not in this classical way, a reserve account to build up. It's it's just a startup account to account for the cost that that we will incur for sure once we start with the rental registry.
Okay, and just a sidebar comment, um I know you you can't give me the answer, but we will see the details of what staff proposes of how that program should work in the future. So as long as it's not starting yet, it hasn't been authorized yet.
Yes, you will. Um but again, uh as I s- I stated, we we wanted to make sure that if this, and this was the expressed uh wish of the council uh to start working on it. And we we have to have allocate, we have to allocate resources to that.
Okay, understood. Thank you for your answer. Mayor, that's all ahead.
I, thank you, council. A question I have is in regards to measure P, measure S. Um just a general question in, I know that we might need a a separate report on this, but um how are we doing in regards to fulfilling our goal of getting all the streets done in the city?
We're doing very well and 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 Andrea will will talk a little bit more about that.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Uh we have a couple of projects that um you approved, Aris Canyon. We're working on a resurfacing project number four that's going to go in the fall. We're also looking into putting a slurry package that's going to go in the summer. So uh we're lucky enough not to have very high temperatures, so we can still do paving in the summer. So we're um out hiring for senior engineers right now. We were about fifty two percent um with engineers. So as as Raphael spoke about vacancies, we're we're a little bit hurting in engineers. But we're moving forward. We're thinking outside the box. We're doing things a little differently. And uh we're continuing with measure S. We did drop a point on a P C I, but we hope to recover by the end of the year.
Perfect, thank you. Um and and when does the report come to the council, the next update?
It's an annual report. I believe it comes in
Yeah, so somewhere in the second half of of the, s- second half of the annual year. I I have a September, October feeling, so.
And we actually do quarterly um quarterly meetings with the oversight board. Um so we have reports that we do every quarter um to present to the board that they have. So we can, if you want, receive those reports.
Okay, no, that's good. Thank you. Um and then I I wanted to follow up on one of the questions, the the discussion that was happening with uh Councilmember Hoff's question around the insurance J P A. I I don't, I don't have actually much knowledge or familiarity with that. How is that managed? And is there a board associated? How is that, how does that work?
Yes, um so for each, we have Excel is our, uh a lion is our insurance character. So Excel is our um the J P A's name. Each member, um each um city member, there's thirteen cities, we have either it's either the risk manager or um administrative director or finance director, whoever is appointed from each city, sits on the board and we all have an alternate alternate. So for our city, I'm the board member and our risk manager is the alternate. So we have quarterly meetings and that's how that all the decisions and things, and there's different um committees. There's an underwriting committee, a finance committee. Um there is um claims committee, there there are several different committees within that board that manages the um the fund.
Okay, eh, so let me give you the the names of the cities, because th- these are not goofy cities.
Uh not wet cities?
Goofy cities.
The 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 Technical term.
And and again, we have to look at the cost, completely agree with you, but these are cities that that are committed to have the same risk management practices, uh putting the same emphasis on how we explore cases, how we settle cases, et cetera. Starting with the city of Anaheim, city of Bakersfield, city of Burbank, city of Modesto, Monterey, Mountain View, Ontario, Palo Alto, Salinas, Santa Barbara, Santa Cruz, Santa Monica, and Vesalia. These are the cities. And and so in this pool, we try to to um keep those costs under control. And then as as Raphael pointed out to you, this is, there's a great portion of of um insurance cost. But again, as part of this, we are trying to, or this Excel insurance pool tries to adhere to very strict standards. And by being a smaller J P A like that with thirteen members, you can accomplish it uh a little bit easier than if you have um a a larger group of of insurance carriers where then everyone has to pay for the mistakes of some of those more goofy cities, as I said. Now, having that that all said, you 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 see there's a bright, a a big mix, a broad mix from city of Anaheim, Disneyland to to city of Monterey or city of Palo Alto or city of Salina. So there's a big scope in that, but that's that's the self-insurance pool that we have.
Okay, and and one last question on that. Is there efforts to expand that pool to try to help? Or is it, that's the exclusive group and that's kind of what we're stuck with?
They are actually looking at expanding them, but not more than than two more. So they're looking at some things they're putting out there, but not um not to make it huge.
If if I could just add, I think a valid question would be, how many um of these cities or how many instances of the members of the pool are hitting that one million dollar mark? So in our experience, um at least in the seventeen years I've been here, we've never had a insurance claim paid. We've never Had a insurance claim paid. We've never gone beyond the one million self insured retention. And so if several of these other cities. Are having that happen and it's increasing our costs, that's a valid thing. To look at and and we'll and we'll do that. I think what Rafael is saying, though, is even if we were on our own, the cost of getting insurance nowadays is just incredibly expensive. So but it's it's a valid question that you all are asking and we can do a little digging to see.
Okay, thank you. I have some other points, but I'll save those for council discussion. So with that, let's go out to. Public comment. If anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item, feel free to come forward to the mic and speak for your three minutes.
Is this on? Hi, my name is Ellen McEwan. I'm a commissioner for City of Monterey Parks and Recreation. I know I've met some of you. And I'm also a recently retired physician. And to that end, I'm really interested in the mental and physical health of our city. And I particularly have an interest in the sports center. Because it does support both mental and physical well being. And. My impression is is that they're running pretty short staffed. I know the. Plan will be to expand back to their original hours and offer similar services to what. They had prior to the pandemic, which was fabulous and wonderful for all of us. But they just have six full time. Employees right now and prior to the pandemic, I think it was something like twenty eight. So I'd like to know if you have any insider plans as to. Budgeting for the sports center over the next year.
Thank you so much. What what we don't engage in dialogue during the public comments, but we will be sure to get a response back on for you for that. Thank you for your public comments.
Hi, Jean Rash. Speaking. Not for NCIP, but because I'm the vice chair. Of the Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program. I have some of these questions and I want to preface with, I think the Parks and Rec Commission is fabulous. The staff is fabulous. Some of the same questions Commissioner McEwan has. So we have a fourteen million dollar Parks and Recs budget. And I think you said fifteen percent was salaries, so that's two point one million. I I imagine because there's a lot of talk about increasing there the the staff that. A lot of that delta of around twelve million will will go to staff. But not tons if your salaries are only two point one now. As an NCIP vice chair, I'm always interested in. Where is the delta in the Parks and Recs budget going? Is are these allocations that can go to projects that compete with the NCIP projects? There's there's always. Inherently, some tension between submitted projects for NCIP, some from staff. Some that have been criticized over over the years, some from the community. And and an attention between. Where does the NCIP money go? And what I want to know is where does the Parks and Recs? Money goes so that I can better. Guide our committee through some of that tension. For instance, Parks and Recs comes up with their preferred. Projects. This year, they're starting with the rec trail study. And at toward the end is something like. Via Parizo basketball upgrades. NCIP kind of says. Hey, the city ought to handle some of the heavier citywide lifting projects. That I would say included the whole park, the rec trail overview. And we, the neighborhood, should be redoing the basketball court via Pariza Park. If you could help me understand, where is the delta of Parks and Recs going? So I know how much is projects. You know, can can they redo the the turf at Jack's Park? How much money do they have versus how much money does NCIP have? Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City of Monterey council members. My name is South Jing Liu, an international policy and development student. From Middlebury Institute of International Studies. I'm here to urge you to pass a living wage ordinance for the city of Monterey. I submitted a wetten comment yesterday with much more detail. A living wage is different from the minimum wage. It is calculated based on the cost of. Living that enables workers to afford basic necessities such as housing, food, healthcare. To maintain a decent standard of living. And passing a city living wage ordinance does not mean that all businesses in the city must pay their employees a living wage. Rather, the ordinance would only require the city to pay at least their own employees a living wage. As many as twenty cities in California have already passed living wage ordinances. That include not only city employees, but also contractors and subcontractors who do businesses with the city. So I so I suggest Monterey follows their deed and includes contractors and subcontractors who do business with the city as well. This could be done by establishing a fixed in timeline to allow businesses. To adjust to the new wage requirements gradually and including annual cost of living adjustments to keep the living wage. Pace with inflation and economic changes. By adopting a living wage ordinance, the city of Monterey can model and champion wages and benefits. That allow people to live in dignity our town. To be a leader for engage for encouraging the nonprofit and profit sectors to do the same. Expert research demonstrate that paying living wages reduces turnover. Increases productivity and has a positive return on investment. I urge you to act on this important matter and pass a living wage ordinance for the city of Monterey. It is a crucial step towards ensuring decades into the future, the rich diversity of citizens, the Monterey Way is about. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your public comments and thank you for your research on that topic. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, let's go online, please.
Certainly, I'm going to call first on Esther Malkin.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to bring up a topic that was brought up, I think it was last year. Or even the year before, which is the consideration to. Raise the stipends that council members are given. The council, the the city hasn't looked at that or raised them since Hans can correct me, but I believe it was nineteen eighty eight. And I believe that. If that was done, we would have more candidates. That would represent our city, including the sixty six percent renters that we have. To run for a seat in each of our districts. So I think. There was conversation about. Not wanting to raise it because there was a cost involved, but at this point, I don't think that cost is going to be huge. By comparison to some of the other things we're talking about tonight. And I think it's important that we make it possible for people that. Live here to be represented that can't afford to. Run campaigns or, you know, do all that's involved in getting elected, but I believe that. Raising that incentive would give people at least some interest to supplement their incomes. Like seniors that have nothing but social security income. Not everybody can retire at the level that some of our current and previous council members have and live in this area. With just their social security is not feasible. It's more of an equity issue. And I think that it's time that the city do it and follow another city that I submitted to council. Their agenda report. That as soon as they doubled their stipends, they elected a renter the very next election. So I would like to urge you to have that conversation again. Before you just you finalize this budget. And figure out how that can be done so that we could have better representation in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, there are no further comments on.
Wasn't expecting that. Okay, perfect. Thank you for everybody that participated in public comments. Maybe what we can do is start with. Some responses in regards to things that were were asked during public comments. So I heard about the. Staff at the the sports center. I guess my question that might help. Get to where the council might be having a deeper conversation about that. When is the study? That was done around the sports center? When is that going to be coming in front of the council?
Yes, we plan to bring that. To council at the next study session. So the study session in May will be dedicated to hearing a presentation from staff. And receiving the recommendations from the consultant. They've been working. Hard alongside our city team through the pro forma as well as an analysis.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you. And so Commissioner McEwan, I I think that might be a good time. For for you to come back and and listen in on that discussion. And I just say that because. I think that might be a starting place for the council to have a conversation regards to what the future of the sports center looks like. I I also heard a question from Jean regards to the NCIP funding versus the the Parks and Rec. And I'm I'm not quite sure how fully to to answer that, but I think that there. I'll I'll maybe pass it to staff to see if they have any response to that. But what I would offer is I think there's a space to have a deeper conversation in regards to. NCIP and and what do projects look like coming in front of NCIP? But I'll pass it to Hans to see if you have any thoughts in regards to her questions.
Not really. And if I say this, I I apologize that that I don't want to. Well, from a legal perspective, you please go ahead first and then then I try to say.
I think part of where this is stemming from is maybe projects formerly used to be characterized as community wide. And that stemmed in large part from how funding was allocated. And there's no, there was really no reason for that distinction because every project is located within a neighborhood. So if you're. If there's a project proposed for the Monterey Sports Center, it's in the downtown neighborhood. It's not a. There's really no reason to have a distinction between community wide or neighborhood. Moreover, there's no restrictions on who can propose a project. So you can live in Carmel and propose a project on the rec trail. City staff can propose a project in the same way as any resident. And so what it boils down to is if there's a sports center project that's proposed. That the NCIP does not want to fund, they don't need to recommend that project. It's pretty. Simplistic. That's the that's the legal parameter. And so they may not. Some members of the committee, as I've heard, do not like staff or other people submitting. Or nominating projects for the committee's consideration, but that is beyond their ability to control. So. It's it's an open forum for people to put forward their great ideas. And it's up to them to recommend it to the council to fund or not fund.
Okay, so I I think there there. Thank you for that. I won't I won't do that to him. There's probably space to have a deeper conversation there, so. I I don't think we could do too much back and forth in in the study session, but I to be continued. And then just commenting on the living wage, if this is less questions, but I. Receive what's being shared there. And I definitely think that there's conversation for this council to to engage in that dialogue. This links to another conversation. That I think there might be opportunities in the city of Monterey, particularly around a project labor agreement. And so I think there's conversations to make sure that we're paying people a living wage. And this goes directly towards the conversation around housing affordability. If we're not able to pay people the cost to be able to afford to live here, then, you know, I think we're almost creating the problem of having to find a way of subsidizing that housing. So. Deeper conversation there. And again, I appreciate it. And let's try to find a way of staying engaged on the work that you're doing in that space. And then I heard. Esther speak to the stipend discussion. And I know that that was something that was brought forward in the budget. This year's budget when we discussed it last year. And I definitely think that there's space. To continue having that discussion and I'm I'm open to to that if if the council. Is willing and I think Esther hit it spot on. I think. I think that. You know. When we're looking at trying to find a way of recruiting folks, particularly as we go to districts and. We're we're seeing a more limited group of folks running for office. I mean, both of the council seats in this past election were. Not competitive. And I think that that's a sign to a symptom in regards to. Folks' inability to to run. So I I can go on there, but I just wanted to be able to respond to some of the public comments there. Let's go around the council and see if there are any last minute questions, feedback. We have. Twenty minutes, so I think everybody gets more or less five minutes. If I did that, no, that's less than five minutes. Councilmember Barber.
I'll just take like a minute. So. We already had the discussion. So all the things that we talked about, I think are great and how we're moving forward on it. I did have a question dealing with the information. Services fund. I know that IT is going up for everybody. I mean, that's something we're seeing across the board at different universities and the businesses as well. But I'm wondering, kind of similar to the bidding out, how many times of the year or what time of year or how many times did we actually look at? Bidding out the different IT services. Just and you may not have that information. The IT people may have more of that information because I'm just curious because. Though the cost of IT is going up. But it's also a lot more choices as well as what we can do. So I was just curious as how many times we actually vet it and shop it out.
I would say that for every single project, we we look at costs, we we strive to find. The most cost effective vendor at the best price and. In nearly every single case, we we actually go through a process where. We take advantage of PD backing. So we find other cities that have gone through an RFP process. Recently and and find the lowest price that we can piggyback on. And that that helps us save. In some, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars in the recent. Cost, we we went through a major revamp as an example of network switches for the city. And the. Cost difference and Angie and her team reviewing those those cost differences. We end up saving six hundred thousand dollars on on one project. So. We definitely look at this very carefully. And then we also do true ups where we we see how many accounts do we have? Are there accounts that? Maybe aren't needed or equipment that's not needed so that we can then also reduce those those costs because it's often on a per user or per equipment basis.
Awesome. Thank you.
Easy peasy. Who wants to go next? Councilmember Smith?
No, I think I covered the priorities and look forward to June when we get this fine tuned and. We're obviously going to go through NCIP and looking at the list there too. And so we get an opportunity to participate in. There is one thing that it's now it's not the time to even really talk about it, but I just still want to plant the seed that we have a community center that's not yet open in Kona. And I know there's a public outreach going on right now, so for the public, please participate in that. I think that's through the planning or Department of Recreation. Hans, is that where the survey is coming from?
Yeah, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Parks and Rec survey of intended use of the Kona Neighborhood Center. So the public, please participate in that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Smith, thanks for bringing that up. And can staff clarify the details of that event so that if folks are listening and that haven't. Heard about it can have the details?
Yep, we're we're very excited. And thanks to Shannon Leon and and the rec team for putting this on. There will be two events. One will be held a week from next Monday, so Monday, May eighth. That will be a town hall meeting and charrette. So we'll be gathering feedback, sharing a little bit of history on the Keston Oaknall Park Center. And also split folks up into different groups and gather feedback on what services they're looking forward to receiving at at the center. based on needs and demands. And we do hope to gather creative ideas from the community at at that meeting. We also recognize that
Real quick, Monday, May eighth, what time?
That's at six. Yeah, it starts at six P M.
And that at the
That's at the at the center at the Casanova Oaknoll Park Center, I think seven thirty five Ramona Street Avenue, Avenue. And the other event, we recognize there are limitations and barriers for individuals from the Via Del Monte and Del Monte Grove neighborhood and Laguna Grande neighborhood to make it out to Casanova Oaknoll Park Center in the evening. So we are planning an event on Saturday, May thirteenth at Montecito Park. It will be an opportunity to engage with the public, gather feedback and also hold some exciting activities for families. We're partnering in the Brian and the Monterey High School Robotics Team. They're actually coming out and doing a STEAM activity. Those who are familiar with STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and math. So thank you. Thank you all for the collective help on on that. So we're very excited about this event. It will be starting at eleven o'clock A M. Go through, take a few hours. But in addition to those two events, we are sending out a postcard mailer to all residents of the Casanova Oaknoll neighborhood, along with Montecito neighborhoods to gather feedback in both English and Spanish on the services they'd like to see in 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 the neighborhoods.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. So I'm very excited about the Casanova Park Center Town Hall and just gatherings for community to come out and express their interest and and really let us know what they would like to see at that center. So I'll be at both events, looking forward to it. And along those lines, I was really excited to also hear comments about just parks and rec in general come up. Commissioner McEwan, I think, brought forward a really important point in that the funding allocated to parks and rec is really an investment for our residents because there we provide the opportunity for activities that contribute only, not only to physical health for our residents, but also men mental. So I think it's a great opportunity to really look at not only what we're doing with the sports center, but also the all the rec rec centers throughout the city, including Casanova Park Center. So just wanted to share that. And then I think it was a great point also made up, brought up, sorry, in terms of the raising of stipends for council members. I think it it goes in line with encouraging community to really become more engaged with with government, with local government and really providing that opportunity or that support for folks to be at the table where those decisions are made about the neighborhoods where they live. So that's that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Garcia. Councilor Hafa.
Yeah, all really good comments. I think my bird's eye view of the budget is it looks pretty promising. I'm really glad to see us putting away some funds in the various reserves, especially some of the long term reserves, the infrastructure reserves and all of that. So I'm really pleased to see that. As far as some of the comments from the public, yes, definitely want to see us reinvigorate our sports program. And I I know the staff does as well. So looking forward to hearing that consultants report to us on, you know, how we can best do that. We do, of course, want to do it in an efficient way. And I think that's where the report comes in. With respect to council stipends, I mean, it's always, it would, it's an awkward conversation to have. Like, you know, we've been doing this, I do this, I would do it for no stipend. But I do think there's a reality that there are some people who can't afford to do that, who might be really good council persons. And for the public that doesn't, might not be aware, council stipends are four hundred dot for this council are four hundred dollars a month. In terms of the kind of workload, it can be, I would say, a minimum. We probably spend a minimum of ten hours a week. And you can easily spend twenty hours a week, depending on, you know, how long it takes you to read the packet or how how many community members want to meet with you or talk with you or, you know, communicate with you on a particular, particular issue. So I certainly think it would be justified. I certainly think it would be helpful. It may be something that if this, if there is an interest, maybe we want to look at doing it where it would take effect in the future. There's for me, it feels a little uncomfortable about sort of voting to give myself effectively a raise. So I don't know. Those are, those are just some of my thoughts.
Perfect. You all saved me ten minutes. I'm going to fill it up. Thank you for the laugh because I would have been awkward if nobody laughed at that.
Bye.
I'll try not, I'll try not to take up the entire time. One of the things that I brought up at the strategic discussion that we had back in January was the idea of creating a budget committee where some space of engaging with the community in a deeper way, more conversation happening publicly around what our budget looks like. And I don't know exactly what institutionalizing that looks like. I imagine it would be a heavy lift, but I also find great value in creating more transparency in our budget process and community engagement in our budget process. And I think it allows time for not just the council and staff, but also the public to go deeper in some of these conversations. I mean, we didn't really go into any of the budgets for any of our departments. And there were some new things that were brought into this report that I've never saw before since being on the council for the last four year, which last four years, which I appreciate. There's just no time. There's no time to discuss all that on the council. But I think having public discussion will be of value to our city and to our community. So I think that if we can look at trying to get something going, I think it could be of value on on many different levels. And and it would be great that if we decided to do that, that we could get it up and running in time for the next fiscal year. So that way, whatever that map out is for them to be able to, you know, be educated, learn, and then also start providing feedback and and having those discussions on the various accounts. So I I lay that out there. Hans, at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about cuts versus, you know, in, you know, revenue. And and so, you know, I think that might be a great opportunity. And I said this in January as well, where, hey, if the council is looking at trying to find a way of doing both revenue increases and and cuts to expenditures, maybe we could give some parameter or or some kind of direction to the committee to say, hey, this is what the council is requesting. Look at what your proposal would be to the council. And you're right, making cuts is absolutely challenging and it's very difficult. But I think that if we had a committee that gave a good recommendation at this council, I think would be brave enough to make those tough decisions so that we can make sure that we're managing our taxpayer dollars as effectively as possible. All right. I'm just going to make a general statement and I don't want to go too long wind on this one, but I think that there is a need for us to diversify our revenue. If we look at the the pie chart, every year that I've been on the council, I've seen the percentage of T O T increasing of our overall revenue. Well, we've seen the effects of that during the pandemic. And who knows what might the future might hold for the hospitality industry? And this isn't to say to not give appreciation love to the hospitality industry. It's very core and central, and I think it will be long term into the future. But we need to make sure that we're diversifying it. And I think we're going to be doing that, I believe, next month. We're going to be discussing cannabis. And so I know that there's going to be some additional revenue coming in from there. But we really do need to look at how do we kind of make sure that we're more secure long term into the future? In regards to new programs, at the council meeting, the last council meeting last week, it was discussed around the idea of a institutionalizing an emergency rental assistance program. I'd offer that maybe we change that to be an emergency housing assistance program. Because as I indicated, there could be seniors on fixed incomes as an example that own a home that might need assistance because of, you know, a health issue or whatever it may be. So I I'd love to see that come back to the council in June when we discuss the budget and and see if we can make that work. One of the other things that we discussed in the past was partnering with Monterey One Water on their payment assistance program for low low income individuals. And just to describe that further for the public, our our wastewater bill, which is Monterey One Water, has two components to it. There is a component that is funding Monterey One Water as an agency. And there's another component that funds. I can't remember exactly what the infrastructure is in the city of Monterey that the city of Monterey funds.
Two components, the stormwater utility and the sewer utility for the city, the city infrastructure for both.
So some of that comes to the city. And right now, M one W institutionalized their assistance program. And I think the city of Monterey can be a leader. I imagine that it wouldn't be at a cost greater than ten thousand. But it would be interesting to see what that would look like if we can partner with them and really take a lead at setting the example for our neighbors in the region to help support our low low income individuals. And this directly connects to the housing affordability conversation because your utilities are often a cost associated with that. So if there's a way that we can support that, that would be greatly appreciated. And then I'm interested in having a deeper conversation with the council. Obviously, today is probably not the right time, but I would love to have a conversation around increasing our percentage of our general fund budget that goes towards our economic uncertainty fund. To me, that's that's low. I know that might make you a little bit nervous. Out of, out of all of our funds, I want to make sure that that we're increasing that one. When we look at our neighbors, staff did a good job of providing a report to the council of showing how much our neighbors are doing. And a lot of our neighbors are doing better than we are, and and we need to do better. Right now, that fund offers us enough to operate the city for three months, I, three months. So there's, I need to to increase that. One of the things that I'd be interested in too is, I shouldn't ate this candy before, before talking. We did, the council did cuts during the pandemic to programs and not everything is back. And I'd like to be really transparent with the public and particularly our new council members on looking at what programs have or what programs and positions have we not brought back? And that be a very specific and clear part of the agenda report. What does that look like? And and as an example, I know that we haven't refunded the events grant program. I know that there's some concerns around that. We might want to look at changing the parameters around things like that. But I think it's a policy decision that the council has to be held accountable to. And so it would be really helpful to see that. I might take up this entire time. I'm gonna try to keep it to two. Oh, I'm not sure. Somebody was saying, talking about this earlier, might have been, might have been Ed. But it would be helpful to see in the budget book some, just to make information a little bit easier to see and and a little bit more transparent. It'd be helpful to see what was the previous funding in the in the in an account. How much is being used or anticipated to be used in that fiscal year? And then I have to go back to my notes. Right. Because it's hard to see. We see the actuals or the projected. And it's hard to know how much was actually put into that account in that fiscal year as opposed to what was already in it. It's all just in one. So it would be nice to see that particularly for the funds. Right? So for, and and as an example, and I I would ask to pull it up, but I'm getting low on time here. For the vehicle fund, it'd be nice to know how much are we going into the fiscal year with? How much are we allocating in our budget for this fiscal year? And then how and what are we projecting it to be at the end of the year? It's it would just be helpful to kind of see that for for those funds.
We have that in there. We will make sure that it's updated.
Okay, perfect, perfect. I think that is it. Okay, I'm going to end with something that is not specific, but connected to the budget. Because I forgot to say this at the last week's meeting. When is the survey due for the housing survey for the for the April thirtieth? So I just kind of want to, public service announcement, last opportunity, we extended the survey. So I I just encourage folks in these last few days here to help spread the word, get that out there. Because this is going to be the last chance for the survey opportunity for people to give input in regards to that. And it's a really good way of just becoming educated on that. I think that is it for me. If there's any, not anything else from the council, we'll go ahead and call this meeting adjourned at six o'clock. Yes.